Okay, we're up. Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen of Milton for October 20th, 2015. First order business is approval of the minutes of meetings for September 29th and October 6th.
I'm glad that we approved the meeting minutes for September 29th and October 6th, 2015, as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item three on the agenda is confirmation of future meeting dates. The 26th and 27th, which is town meeting, and if necessary, the 27th, I guess. November 3rd, November 17th, and November 24th. And the only thing, the only question I might have is November 24th. I am traveling the week of Thanksgiving.
It's November 24th?
Yeah. So, I could do it on the Monday if somebody wants to meet on Monday instead of --
So, the November 23rd?
I'm leaving Tuesday, I'm leaving Tuesday morning.
So, November 23rd?
Is that good with the board?
Yeah, I can do that.
I think so, yeah.
It's fine.
Because we do have liquor license renewals that have to get done that last week of November, so we do have to have a meeting that week.
Okay. Yeah, the Monday be great.
So, the 23rd, okay.
Let's do that.
Do we have a notice posted for Thursday evening?
Yeah, I believe we do. Okay. Item four on the agenda is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, before I start, citizen speak, I just want to, and we will get to it very shortly, but I just wanted to say something about citizen speak and, because from time to time we receive correspondence from residents that are upset about the amount of time they're given to address the board, sometimes about allowing non-residents to, to address the board. And I just want to make it clear that the Board of Selectmen's meetings are open public meetings, and under mass general law, anybody from the public, resident and non, is entitled to attend the meeting. So, according from the regulations that the Attorney General has, in the, in the open meeting law guide, that while the public is permitted to attend an open meeting, an individual may not address the board without permission from the chair. An individual may not disrupt a meeting of a public body or request the chair, or request of the chair, all members of the public shall, at the request of the chair, all members of the public shall be silent. After a clear warning, a person who continues to be disruptive, the chair may order to leave. So, that's what the Attorney General says about it. So, the public is entitled to attend all public meetings, obviously, but the public has no entitlement to speak or address the meeting unless the chair so says. There is no state law or local bylaw that entitles the public to address a public body. Similarly, there is no law or local bylaw that would exclude a non-resident from attending a public meeting or addressing, at the, at the chair's consent, addressing the, the public body. That being said, the board, like all boards that have come before us, does and always will welcome and encourage all public attendees at our meetings to address the board with their concerns and comments, provided those comments are not raceful, racist, or hurtful in any way or directed at specific individuals, whether those individuals are in attendance or not. The primary purpose of a public meeting is to conduct the business of the public body. The structure and comportment of our meetings must always be framed in the interest of completing the business before the public body. So, for that reason, we do reserve the right to limit the amount of public speak, especially in meetings when we have a large number of items on our agenda. So, I just wanted to say that. It's not, it's not trying to cut you off, it's just that at times we have a lot of business, and, and the prime purpose of our meetings is to do that business. So, that being said, I will open up to citizen speak if anybody would like to address the board. Phil?
Hi, I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I think all the Board of Selectmen are aware of the issue that I faced when I returned home on Tuesday from work, and this is random. There were two very large piles of dirt blocking one full lane of my street from being able to pass by. And I checked the town bylaws, and perhaps I don't, I didn't get the right one, but what I found was, under police regulations, no person shall obstruct any portion of any way which the town is obliged to keep in repair without permit in writing of the selectman, nor having obtained such permit, shall fail to comply with the conditions thereof, and in addition to any penalty to which he may be subjected under these laws for failure, he shall reimburse the town for all expenses and damages which the town may be compelled to pay by reason of unauthorized use or any failure to comply with said conditions. And, you know, I, I wrote a note and to Joe Lynch, and Joe responded to me saying, "I dispatched our town engineer to the site first thing this morning. We both had assumed that Riley Brothers Construction, working on behalf of National Grid, was the reason behind the piles. They were on the process of doing roadway and shoulder restorations. However, upon arrival, we learned that the issue was Stayer Nursery Landscaping performing prior, private work at 22 Parkwood. Mr. Thompson ordered them to immediately remove all material from the street and to clean the street of all debris and residue before the close of business today. We will also follow up with the owner slash builder to have them obtain an after-the-fact street occupancy permit." Joe. Now, I wanted to hand out another picture, which shows, which shows the drain on my street, so you can imagine where the dirt goes when you wash down the street. Goes right in the town storm drain. And I, I mentioned this to Joe, and I asked that he inspect the storm drain to make sure that there was no obstruction in the storm drain. He ignored that note. I went back to Joe, and I said, "I am requesting a copy of the permit that you referred to below. It would be great if you could scan it and email it to me." He wrote back and said, "A permit application has not been submitted. Parties using a public street such as the, the way this one was used without any permit is a very common occurrence over most of the year. In the overall priority of ongoing activities in my department, this is an extremely low one. Chasing down a permit application for something that has been completed without incident would be nothing but punitive and does not warrant any further effort from my very busy staff." I guess I'd have to say I'm appalled by that type of response, and I think that Joe should be disciplined. Why? Because we have a clear bylaw that says that the selectman must issue a permit. My, my assumption is that the Board of Selectmen has delegated that responsibility to Joe. Joe initially wrote to me and said that he was going to make sure that he issued an after-the-fact street occupancy permit, and then he comes back and says, "I'm too busy to do it." Now, if he had initially said that he had no intention of doing it, I guess I would still have an issue, but I'd understand. But he said in his email that he was going to do it. I requested a copy, and he says, "Well, I'm way too busy to do that." I think it's clear that these two eight-foot-tall piles of dirt, six to eight feet tall, were an obstruction of the road, and, and one of the things I also noticed in the bylaw was that it's required to be adequately marked. This dirt was left in the street overnight, and in my opinion, it's not adequately marked. There are a bunch of orange cones around, piles of dirt that block an entire travel lane of the road. I think a flashing beacon of some type would have been superior. I can only imagine what would happen if somebody ran into that pile, their airbags deployed, they were injured. I wonder, did, did the person who put the dirt there, or is the responsible party, did they have adequate insurance to protect the town in the event of injury? And who went to make sure that that was a fact? I think the bylaws are excellently written to protect the town against these kinds of things. They're very complete, and the idea that whoever left this, these huge mounds of dirt in the middle of a travel lane of a road would be required to have insurance is, is a good thing. I, I would urge the town to enforce the bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for citizen speak? Seeing none. Next we'll have a conference with Michael Sullivan on the flag retirement project. Michael, want to come up? Hi, Michael.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael, you're at Milton High.
Yeah, junior.
Junior. Good.
My name is Michael Sullivan, and I am a junior at Milton High. And I am also a volunteer tour guide at Ford Independence on Castle Island in South Boston. As some of you may know, I am leading a flag retirement project. I have set up bins in every Milton public school and, and hopefully the town hall to collect unserviceable flags. My goal is to bring awareness to my generation on how to properly dispose of a flag. The American flag for me stands for more than just an object. It symbolizes over 200 years of history, and it is what brings us together as a nation today. Men and women have sacrificed on our lands and overseas for the meaning of this flag. I participated in last June's Flag Day retirement ceremony at Ford Independence. The next one is on Veterans Day at 10:00 a.m., and that is why I am collecting flags across town. Obviously, we are very, we are a very patriotic town, and you don't have to travel far to see an American flag in Milton. I am happy to do this project because it combines our appreciation for our veterans with a chance to properly dispose of a flag that's been proud, that's been flown proudly. Bins will be available through November 9th, or if anyone has a problem with dropping off a flag or questions about this project, they can email me at miltonflagretirement@gmail.com. Thank you for your time. I'd also like to thank Superintendent Gormly, the principals of Milton Public Schools, and Mrs. Fagan, our town administrator.
Great.
That's a great project, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
So, where again on those, are those bins going to be? There's going to be?
In the front lobby of each school.
Each school, okay.
The main lobby here, too.
What's great about it is my, my sons are at Glover School, and they came home talking about it. So, their teachers have educated them about it, so I think it's great that they're learning a little bit about our, our flag and how important it is to our country. So, I commend you for this. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Michael spoke at Celebrate Milton, too, and was greeting a lot of people there at one of the tables with Ed Bullard and talking about the project.
I am also a son of the American Legion as well.
Oh, that's great.
Well, great. Congratulations.
Why don't you say that email address once more, just so the cameras pick it up?
Miltonflagretirement@gmail.com.
Miltonflagretirement@gmail.com, so anyone can contact Michael there. That's great news, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Item seven on the agenda is a conference with Peter Epstein on the RCN contract. Hi, Peter.
How are you?
Very good.
Peter.
Good evening.
So, if you'd just like to briefly go over the contract with us?
Sure. As you know, Milton has two cable companies serving it, RCN, Telcom, and Comcast Communications. And for several months, we have been negotiating the terms and conditions in a new RCN license. The original RCN license was granted back in 2000, and after a hiatus, the town amended the license. So, in fact, it was originally a 10-year license. The town granted RCN another five years, and so that license is expiring, I think, on November 1st. We have negotiated and prepared a new 10-year renewal license for RCN. 10 years is the maximum term allowed by Massachusetts law. I think you, you should have three copies before you. And to summarize, it's a 10-year license. The funding is 5% of RCN's gross annual revenues, and that can be used to fund, excuse me, your access group or other cable-related purposes. There is separate funding for equipment, and that comprises of a total of $50,000, which is payable at $5,000 a year, and an additional half a percent of gross. Again, that's for cable purposes, excuse me, or your access group. RCN did agree to provide, in addition to the three standard definition channels, which is what is being shown to your residents right now, one additional high-definition channel, and that will be made available in short time. In addition, RCN provided the equipment to make that work. There is equipment that the access group has to have, that RCN has to provide. And I would say that that's unusual. I can tell you that in all the negotiations that I'm involved with, and this is what I do, I negotiate cable contracts, with another leading cable company, whose name we won't mention, that company will not provide high-definition bandwidth for local access use. And I think that folks who have RCN are going to find, thank you, Anne Marie, are going to find really a, a difference in the quality of the picture they get. And not only in the video that you get, when you have people who come and do PowerPoint presentations, my understanding is it is going to be much easier for the RCN subscribers to really see and understand what those PowerPoint presentations are. So, I think RCN is really to be commended. Tom Steele is here. Tom is a vice president of RCN. He made the negotiations very easy, and incidentally, you may know that federal law requires us to start the renewal process three years before expiration. So, just about right now is the three-year mark for Comcast. So, you'll finish this. You don't have to do anything right away, but you will undoubtedly get a letter from Comcast asking for renewal, and at some point, the town can sit down with Comcast as well. But I think it's a, it's a good contract. I have to say, I think it's a generous con, contract coming from RCN, which, as you probably know, has fewer subscribers than Comcast, but has really stepped up to the plate. And I think providing that high-definition channel should, should really be an improvement for a lot of your RCN subscribers out there. It'll be a crisper signal, so I'm looking at it now. I'm assuming I would look, I would, I don't know.
Thank you.
If I look 10 years younger, then, that's great. I don't think I'm going to look 10 years younger, but that's okay. That's all right. So, we did have, I did ask Barbara if she would make three complete copies. We've gone through a number of revisions, including, we made a couple today. We added, I think it was the East Milton Library Branch, and we put that in Exhibit Two. We had added some origination locations to Exhibit Four, which we had agreed to back in the 2007 amendment. So, I think that it's, it's a good franchise. I think that, you know, in the communities where we have competition, especially where it's, it's Comcast and RCN, you know, we, we're really appreciative of the fact that people have a choice. They have a choice. That's important. They have a choice. So, I would encourage you to consider this and, and sign it, if, if you're so inclined.
Yeah, Peter, the only question I, I had was, I know there was some benchmarks in the original contract that RCN had trouble meeting with the servicing.
As far as their build-out?
Yes.
Yeah.
And how would those handle in the new contract?
In the, in the, I don't know if it was the, it may have been the amendment, the town did agree to a standard, in fact, that allowed RCN to say, "We will serve everybody if they are a certain distance away," and it's not going to cost more than, I think the number we used was $1,000 a house. That was in the amendment, and we simply put it in this license as well. And it is in a number of other municipal franchises, because at some point, RCN had some difficulties and did ask communities for some relief on that. Now, exactly where RCN is in the town and how many subscribers, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I believe they have just under 800 subscribers, and I believe Comcast has probably about 7,200 subscribers. So, people can get RCN, but there is a benchmark to, to get that, and that was just something we had done quite a few years ago. Actually, it was probably, what, eight years ago when we did that amendment?
Peter, just following up on that, that was the area that I had a question about as well. Do you have any sense, from, you're representing other towns on this, what the potential cost could be? It says that if, if RCN can connect a home for a cost of under $1,000, $1,000, then they'll make the connection within 30 days. If it's over $1,000, then the customer would have to pay the difference, and then there's a 30-day period.
Would have to pay the balance, right, right.
Do you have a sense, obviously, depending on what part of town, what, there were unique circumstances that may make that hard to answer in every case, but do you have a sense of what we could potentially be talking about in terms of cost? And I ask that because there are a lot of people in town who have asked about RCN.
About RCN.
Whether they're, why it's not in their particular neighborhood.
Right. Well, Mr. Steele is here, and if you're so inclined, I would ask Tom, because he, he is much more familiar with, you know, each town, and to the degree to which people are calling and asking, can we get the service?
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
For the record, my name is Thomas K. Steele, Jr. I'm vice president and regulatory counsel for RCN. It's a pleasure to be here again. And I will say, I enjoyed working with Anne Marie, and particularly in Barbara Martin and Michael Blanchett. It was, it was wonderful process. It was very enjoyable, you know, which I can't say about all towns. The, we've done about two-thirds of the town, and I'm going to, I knew this better when we were talking, but I think it's the south that's less densely populated. I want to say the southern part of the town. So, when you get spread out, it costs more to reach, and particularly if there's underground construction, is, is expensive. We are always looking to grow within our footprint. One of the inhibitors for us is that we just haven't had success in marketing here in Milton as we'd like. You know, contrast, 700 and 7,000 is, it's not like that anywhere else. So, we have to step it up. We're going to step it up with better marketing, I hope, and we, we hope to look at several, there are several nodes that are borderline, and if we can improve our marketing, get our subscribers, get more subscribers, and build a better base, then I think we, there's several nodes that I think we can do during the course of this license. And you're right to call us on it, say, you know, what have you got? We can, I can show you some of the.
I'm just curious, would you say for much of the town, if, if the cost is over $1,000, are we talking hundreds or thousands of dollars that someone might need to pay in order to get the hundreds?
Yes, hundreds. And to Peter's point, we haven't been getting a lot of calls where people are asking us to come out and survey their properties and do that kind of thing. We have, there hasn't been a human cry for that. So, we'd have to almost create our own enthusiasm, if you will. But if you hear, excuse me, Peter, but if you hear or if you have a question, you know, call me and, you know, Emery, call me, and we'll check out the address and see what we can do. And if we get enough interest, and we can expand, even if we're pushing up against that threshold, but we can gain subs, we'll do that.
Just to give you a plug, is, is RCN price competitive compared to Comcast, or?
Very, very price competitive, and we have a TiVo product that people like, that practically runs the TV for you. We're doing everything with the streaming and all the other things, and our speeds are very good. And because we have fewer subscribers, the speeds tend to stay very high on the internet access side. So, that's a plus. When people come home and they, you know, they're on some other systems, it slows down, but ours is consistently high.
Just about a year ago, we had the ascertainment hearing, and I remember we had one woman who came in, you were, you were here that night, Tom.
Oh, yes.
One woman came in and spoke, and she spoke in favor of the cost and the, the quality of the service, but we had a comment period after that. We, Emery confirmed for me today, we didn't receive any written comments after that, so.
No, we didn't. I suppose the other problem with Comcast, too, is that so many people now are bundled with the telephone and everything else, and that, that becomes an issue, I'm sure, but...
Yeah, we, we offer all three products, too, but, yeah, I'm not sure what it is. I'm honest, I'm not sure what it is here. Maybe we, we had a false start in the beginning, and we, we stumbled, and then we picked up again with that amendment, and then we, so maybe it's just hard to overcome that first impression.
Okay, well, for anybody listening out there, check out RCN.
Still good to have choices.
The other thing is, the license, the license contemplates annual performance evaluations, and I don't know whether the Comcast one does or not, but that's something that the Board hasn't done, and I think we should go, move in the direction of having those, especially as we transition to the stronger town administrator form of government, where the town administrator is picking up some of the things that would normally be on our agenda. This is probably something that should now be coming onto the Board's agenda.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, you will find that, that both licenses are very similar. They've got almost the exact same boilerplate provisions. The funding is a little different in Comcast, so I think when you do ascertainment for Comcast, that you, I would hope, would look at RCN and make sure that, you know, it is a comparable and fair deal.
Right.
For, for both Comcast and, and RCN. And you've got, you've got, you certainly got a lot of time. I did get something from Barbara this afternoon. The DTC, or the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, had written to the town, simply advising them of the impending Comcast expiration.
Yes.
Even though it's three years away. When I first saw it, I thought, "Oh, no, she got that wrong. We're not doing Comcast."
Yep.
And then I read it, and I realized, "Oh, oh, you got the letter from the DTC." So, you know, a lot can happen in three years. This is an industry that's changing a lot. I don't have to tell you, and Tom could tell you even better, so it should be an interesting period, and it may be challenging, you know, when you actually come to sit down with Comcast. But the ascertainment is important. It's all important. So, I, I'm sure you'll do a good job, and that's down the road, though. That's, that's down the road.
And one last point, I mentioned how data and internet access is important, and one concession that Emery did get out of RCN, or two, actually, we're, we're doing a high-speed modem product for a building that you would designate in this, in the town, and we're also doing a modem to improve redundancy at the peer school to give you a backup if something should happen to the existing system.
That's great.
So, we're taking steps to do that as well.
Right.
It's not my grandfather's cable.
I should have mentioned that, and that, again, is something that, and I'm not, I'm not favoring RCN, but, but, you know, RCN agreed to the high-definition channel in the contract. As Tom said, they agreed to the provision of internet in the contract, and they agreed to a senior discount in the contract. And I can tell you, and I'll just say it, those are three things that, that Comcast generally will not do. So, I think that, you know, RCN is really to be commended for stepping up and providing that. You know, it's a valuable service, and RCN did it, so.
Great.
Well, that's great. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve and sign a 10-year cable television renewal license with RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts, LLC. It shall commence on November 1st, 2015, and terminate on October 31st, 2025.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a thank you to our negotiating team of Anne Marie, Michael, and Barbara.
They did a good job.
And our very esteemed counsel, Peter Epstein.
I was going to mention that while you were signing the contracts. I really want to thank Peter Epstein. I want to thank Barbara Martin and Michael Blanchett as well for being, helping with the negotiations.
They did a good job.
And, and, and Mr. Steele, you're, you're superb to work with.
I'm softy. Thank you.
Yeah, so, if you would sign that... Yeah, so if you would sign that now, uh, the plan was for Tom to take it back, and Tom will get these signed by RCN and return one original to the town and one original to, to me, so I will have an original as well.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Peter. Can we sign one? That's awesome.
This one's all signed, just check this.
Okay. Straight goes.
This one. That's one set. Thank you.
You might wanna put in for a better budget makeup.
I'll remember that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight on the agenda is a conference with Council on Aging Director Marian Sullivan, our quarterly report and presentation over FY seventeen budget. Hi, Marian.
Good evening. Hi, Marian.
We picked the right night to come, senior discount.
I know, that's right. Rush right out. I'm a senior.
I know, but we haven't had it for a while, so, good for them.
So, I'm, I'm Michael Val, for those who don't know. I'm, uh, at Lantern Lane, and I am the chair of the council on aging, and I've come here to add a few comments to what Marian's gonna say, and as moral, maybe, support.
Okay. Well, first of all, good evening. Um, this is the first time in twenty-two years I have been asked to give a quarterly report, so I think it's a great idea, makes me feel important in what we do, so thank you. Um, I, as many of you know, so many seniors watch the Board of Selectman meeting. I, I wish you could be a fly on the wall to hear the comments on Wednesday morning from the bridge group as they have their coffee. It, some people say, "Oh, nobody watches it." Trust me, they watch it.
I'm not sure we wanna be a fly on that column.
No, it's usually good comments.
Oh, that's good.
That's great.
So the good news is, the Council on Aging is alive and well and providing great services, programs, and classes to the ever-growing senior population in the town. Our focus remains on healthy aging, no matter how old you are. Our youngest senior is sixty, our oldest is a hundred and four, still lives on her own. Um, as I've said to you many times before, we're not your typical senior center. We don't do bingo, we don't do Foxwood, we concentrate on health and wellness and engagement in life at any age. Our top priority remains keeping seniors independent and active members of the community. They wanna feel they can give something back to the town, and I think your senior tax work-off program that's just winding down, if it's fifteenth year, is proof positive of what a good job they do and how important they feel about it. Um, the big news is, the full-time van driver has started. It has been incredible. What a change it's made. We had a gentleman call and he needed to go to Attleboro. Now, to me, that's like the other side of the world, and he said, "Is there any chance I could get there? I need to get, um, it's a cement shot that you get in your spine that can take away back pain." The only place that, um, he could get it done. I looked at Joe Murren, who's our full-time van driver, and I said, "Attleboro, what do you think?" He said, "As long as we can do it between, you know, eight o'clock and five o'clock at night, we can get it done." We got this resident down there, and I just can't tell you, he sent the most beautiful thank-you note saying, "Thank you." And that's the flexibility we have now with a full-time van driver. You know, we have somebody who's there, if we have an emergency, "I need to get up to Milton Hospital," you know, in ninety-nine percent of the cases, we can help, and it has just made such a tremendous difference. Even in his downtime, he can take somebody to pick up a prescription to go to a bank. Just, it just, the possibilities are endless, and, um, I'm happy to report that in the month of September, the rides were up a hundred and twenty-one, which is great, and the largest increase was Fuller Village. So, that was interesting. Um, as you might know, the Friends of the Council on Aging are fundraising, um, sponsor their Free Shred Day for the town of Milton. We had five hundred cars, non-stop, um, on Saturday morning coming through, all of them saying the same thing. "This is really free," and it was. And the way the Friends, um, approached this again for the second year was, they're just grateful that the town was able to fund a full-time van driver, and being the fact that a lot of them are of the older generation, they just felt it was important to say, "Thank you." And as the residents came through, they said, "Why are they doing this?" And I said, "Truly, just to say thank you." And they're like, "Wow, somebody's actually taking the time to do something and say, 'Thank you,'" even though, you know, it wasn't a million-dollar item. You know, the Friends really appreciated it. And then, two weeks ago, on Sunday, we had Run Milton, a second annual race, no, half marathon. Um, two-hundred-and-fifty runners, another fabulous, fabulous event. Kudos to Maureen Conlon and her incredible team. We don't have the final number yet, but all of that will go to the Senior Van Transportation Fund, so a great effort. Um, since this is my first time, I'm just gonna, you know, tell me what you wanna hear for the next time, and I'll, I'll be a little better prepared, but our upcoming events, I was so glad to see that young student talking about Veterans Day, because on November third, at eleven-thirty, we're gonna have, uh, Twelfth Annual Veterans Appreciation Luncheon. And what we do is, we extend an invitation to any senior veteran in the town to come and enjoy a soup-to-nuts turkey dinner provided by our friends Pat and Brendan Newell of Pat's Pizza. Donnie Lopez supplies flowers, um, the Fruit Center supplies rolls and cider. We have, um, Carri College, my good friend Ken Quigley, who copies, um, we have students in the, we work closely with the students in the golden public schools, and for the past year, we've been working with the special needs students at Pierce, and their teacher, Mrs. Mack, is just incredible. And we were talking about the veterans program, and she said, "Do you think our students could do it this year instead of, you know, Tucker?" And we said, "Yes." And these fourteen students, most, they did the most incredible artwork and just wrote letters, "Thank you" to the veterans. So I bring them up to Carri, Ken Quigley copies, and we give everyone who comes, um, a, a packet, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful event. So just a plug, if there's anybody we missed, um, November third, Tuesday, eleven-thirty, free, you bring a wa- a spouse with you, will provide van transportation, so it's just our way of saying, "Thank you." And the sad thing is, you know, you see so many of the veterans, you know, I think of Joe Manning and Hal Thomas, who have been with me for the last twelve years, who won't be there this year, so just our way, again, of saying, "Thank you" for all they've done. Then on Thursday, November nineteenth, at ten a.m., we're gonna have with us Dr. Robert Stern, who's gonna do a presentation on Alzheimer's awareness. November is Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Dr. Stern is the top in his field. Nancy Stewart, our outreach coordinator, moved heaven and earth to get him. He's, he's so tough, he's on all the Good Morning Talk Shows in the morning, but he's gonna be with us starting at ten o'clock, so I just wanna put that out there. It helps not only people, you know, who have the disease, but people who are caring for them. And when you walk away from his presentation, you walk away and you have hope. You know, there's so many advances, and he's, he takes great pride in saying he's sixty-two, and he knows in his lifetime he's gonna see a cure, so it's a wonderful program, and I'd encourage everybody to come. We're proud of the services we provide our residents. We can't fix every problem, but I can assure all of you that we give a hundred percent plus to, you know, do the best we can, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have or anything you'd like to see in a future report. I'm not a numbers person, so, as you can tell, I tell the story.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess that would be one question in terms of, obviously, there are more seniors now than, than ever in, in the town of Milton, and the number of seniors that avail themselves to the, um, senior center, is that growing?
It is. Last year, it was two-thousand-seventy-one residents who participated in either a program or availed themselves of a service such as, you know, even if it's something as simple as like a blood pressure clinic to have your blood pressure checked, but most of it is transportation. You know, the numbers for transportation, which is, it's just huge, it's off the chart.
Yep.
So we, you know, we deal with the two different segments. We deal with the boomers who say, "I wanna see exercise programs on a Saturday, I wanna see financial, you know, programs early evening." And then we have, you know, the ninety-year-old who says, "I just need a ride to the doctor's or to the Stop &amp; Shop," and, you know, it's a challenge, it is, but...
Marian, what do you, um, you know, for, for, for measurements to, to actually count the residents that come through, what type of format do you use for that?
No, it should be computerized, I know.
Okay, well, that's just a question, because I know that, um, as Tom mentioned, that, that seniors, the, the census says that will probably be around sixty-five-hundred seniors, and they're at Fuller Village, and they're at, also at Pine Tree Brook, and they're at Mire Valley. So, so in, in terms of programming, um, separate from, from actually measuring, what type of outreach do you do to those specific venues to kind of get them engaged into utilizing the senior center?
Right.
Because the senior center should be-
Right.
-fabulous place for, for all ages.
So what we do is twofold. The way we track them, David, is we do it paper check-in. Some senior centers such as Quincy, they have elaborate cards you can scan, similar to, if you go into like, you know, um-
Mm-hmm.
...college or, you know, lunches at a school. We don't have that, it's like ten thousand dollars to put it in. So we literally, if you sign up, you check in, the dates, we tally that every single month. As far as doing outreach, our newsletter is huge. It's nice to see that a lot more seniors are looking at our website as well. I'm very grateful to Rob Mallett for the help he's provided in getting that up and running. Not my area of expertise, but Rob had us on Facebook, um, the town website, so a lot of good information, and a lot of people see it that way. Um, I just think word of mouth is very helpful, you know, in senior communities, you know, people say, "I went to the Council on Aging and I did cheer yoga, and I didn't know you could do that." So somebody telling somebody. Uh, hottest group still is men, very difficult. We just did a men's trip, we went to the L.A.'s Anderson Museum, we took them to lunch at Doyle's, you know, they paid for it, we didn't take them. But, you know, we had a great group of men, and so little by little, you make progress that way, but it's just, it's just everybody working together and trying to put all the pieces of the puzzle together. It's very hard to navigate some of the systems as you get older, and it's just like, you know, working with, um, you know, Fuller, MRE, Home Inc., you know, I was up at Home Inc. the other day when we, talking about, you know, the extra van service we have now because of the full-time van driver, and, you know, Jim Walker spread the word in his community, so I think it's getting it out that way that's extremely helpful.
Plus, we do have a tremendous number of seniors that are not in those facilities-
Right, right.
-but just living in place right now.
Right, right.
It's just continuing, continuing to grow.
Right.
And that, and that probably is even more difficult for outreach because they're not-
It is.
-in one location.
It is. We do get a lot of calls from adult children who say, you know, "My mom or my dad," you know, if some, especially if one's spouse's passed, you know, "I see him sitting alone all the time, what can you do?" And it's hard to do, and it's hard to hear from adult children, so oftentimes Nancy Stewart or Alice Mercer will make a phone call and say, you know, "Hi, we're just calling to say, you know, hello, is there anything we can do to offer some help?" And usually it's like, "No, I'm all set," but then if you repeat that maybe in another month, then it's like, geez, somebody actually cares, so, you know, just keep trying and plugging away and, you know, doing the best you can.
Well, I wanna commend you for doing such a great job, but I also wanna just suggest that, and potentially maybe a survey to all the seniors in a different seniors group and across town, maybe create it at some point.
We did it, we created it, we're gonna send it up.
That's great, because I think that it's good to get feedback from people, and I think that, you know-
It is, absolutely. That's the only way you can do it.
We're in an ever-changing market with a, with a, with a senior, uh, population that's living longer and longer, and their needs, um, become greater, you know, and, and, which is great, that they, that they, that they're living longer and feeling younger and-
And so as an incentive to get the survey back, as we've done this periodically, and, you know, sometimes people will send them back. Number one is gonna be a self-addressed stamped envelope, which is important, and then we're gonna, whoever sends it back, we're gonna enter them in a, um, drawing for a gift certificate to steal and write, so.
That is great.
A little incentive to-
I might take that. You're not there yet.
I am, I'm sixty-five. Yeah. No, it's twenty, it's sixty, sixty.
Sixty, I know, I'm, I'm a senior in denial, so it's-
It's the new fifty.
And that, but that's the other thing, that people will walk in and they'll say, you know, "I live in the town," and sometimes they'll actually go to take out a license, and I say, "You know what? I don't, you know, I don't have to see your license if you're over the age of sixty," and they could be eighty, and I'll say, "But you don't look that to me. Um, you're eligible for the services, you're a member, you know, we're a department of the town, so..." It's, it's tough to step through the door, you know, nobody wants to say, "I'm going to the senior center." We just had the car doctor there from, um, he does, he writes in The Globe, and he's also with AAR.
Yeah.
I can't think of his name. And that was incredible, and my husband just retired, and he said, "Are you having the car doctor?" And I said, "Yeah," and he said, "I think I might come up," and I went, "You might come up?" And he said, "Yeah." He said, "I just wish like it didn't say senior." And he came, and, and he said, "Wow, I was surprised what a great program it was." So it's like, you know, you break away at that stereotype, you know, and I think when people come, they feel comfortable, we try and make them feel welcome, you know, the Friends just set up a Keurig coffee machine, you can come in and have coffee, read a newspaper, you know, have a Lorna Doon cookie, and, you know, it's just, it, it's not as intimidating as some people think it is, so just getting them through the door, and then once you get them, we can usually keep them.
And plus all the activity you have up there, like the, um, the boot camp, the marine runs and, um, and the, the movies and the-
Yoga, Tai Chi, um, Zumba Gold, that's great. I think you saw that, David, the one you were up.
I have seen it.
And, you know, so just a lot of, and everything for health and wellness, you know, not, you know, as I said, not bingo, not Foxwood, and, you know, the best we can do.
That's great. And, and doing it all on a relatively small budget, too, because-
We couldn't do it without fundraising, you know, so it's a huge part of what we do.
That being said, that's a good segue into budget, but-
Good segue into budget.
So I notice your, your budget is, um, for the most part, is, is similar to last time, except on your non, on your contingent budget-
Right.
-and full-time outreach.
Coordinator.
So right now, that, that coordinator is half-time town, half, half her time is funded by a grant and-
She's ten hours funded by the town and twenty-seven-point-five hours formula, um, from our Formula Grant. And what that is, is that's a state grant that is based on the number of elders, and they're still using the twenty-tw- twenty-ten census, and it's, you know, like five-something per elder, and this, um, for FY sixteen, it's gonna be roughly forty-two thousand dollars. So that forty-two thousand dollars pays twenty-seven-point-five hours of the outreach coordinator, and then what we have left is the balance for, um, our outreach work.
So my, my question then is, if your outreach worker becomes full-time town, what is gonna happen with that grant?
Glad you asked that, Tom. So as you just said, and you gave me the perfect segue, um, we do a lot of fundraising. Uh, part-time van drivers, we have one part-time van driver funded by the town, we have four others that are funded, you know, thanks to generosity, twenty-five thousand dollars with the Copeland Family Foundation, and then through the Friends of the Council on Aging. So what that would do would free up roughly forty-two thousand dollars, no, wait, I'm sorry, let me go back. So if, if we were to take the outreach coordinator's position and add it, it would roughly be forty-two thousand dollars, so what that would do was, would free up a, you know, a So, what that would do was, would free up, you know, a portion of that grant money, so we could use it to fund the van driver salaries, and maybe do a little less fundraising. I mean, we could hire more van drivers. You could have that van on the road seven days a week, you really could. Some towns do now, they're providing it, you know, on a Saturday or a Sunday to do things. So, we could certainly, you know, provide that service. But I think the, if I can just say, the real reason I think it's important that we get this on the classification plan, is our current outreach coordinator is in a very unique situation. I know Anne Marie and Tom were involved when we had the discussion about her health insurance and benefits. The, um, I don't know what you'd call it, I don't want to say the deal, but the, the person who's currently in the position, if she was to leave or to apply for another position, the benefits stop. The benefits are only for the person in the position now, Nancy Stewart. So, if, in fact, she left, or she applied for another, another position...
But she's only a 10-hour...
Right. So, in order to get somebody else in to fill that position, and a much, much-needed position, I've done a lot of research on this, you're not going to find anybody who would take a full-time job without benefits in this day and age. It's a critical, critical position. As I said in the narrative, when, you know, when we first started, outreach was, yep, we're the Council on Aging, here's our newsletter, you can't believe what we're seeing now. You need expertise, you need to be up to date on what services are available, you need, we work with police via, you know, the Board of Health, the Building Commission, you know, all sorts of different groups, you know, hoarding issues, you need to be up to date on them. You know, you need to know the demographics of the population you're serving, how do you outreach to people, you know, who maybe aren't your typical Milton senior? How do you do that? How do you break that barrier? I don't want to get carried away, because I tell too many stories, but just one, two weeks ago, Nancy Stewart was in, and we were trying to get together. I was working on budget stuff, she was trying to do a newsletter. A woman came in the door, and came up to the window, and Tricia said, you know, "Hi, how can I help you?" You know, introduced herself. The woman broke into tears, she said, "I'm 67 years old, a young senior." She said, "I've lived in the town of Milton for 27 years, my two children went through the school system." She said, "I've had some health issues, I haven't been able to work." And she said, "I'm one month away from being homeless," and she broke into tears, and she said, "I can't find anybody to help me." Nancy stopped what she was doing, brought the woman into a private office. An hour and a half later, she came out, I went over to her, and I introduced myself, and I said, "You know, were you able to get some help?" And she said, "I was." She said, "That person was so kind. I didn't know we had things in Milton, such as the Milton Housing Authority. I didn't know how to access services like that." And that's what outreach does. It can't fix everything, but what it does is it, it helps you put the pieces together. And she said, "No one else would listen to me," and she said, "I can't tell you how grateful I am." We followed up on it, the woman is now on a couple of lists, you know, she's, we hooked her up with South Shore Elder Services, with, you know, Greater Boston Legal Services for free legal help. And that's why it's so important, I, you know, one of the, another one of the reasons is the schools recently hired a similar position, a full-time, I don't think they call it, you know, outreach, but it's to help children to go into the homes, if there's, you know, situations, you know, that they need a little more Kia. And I think if we're doing that for our students, as a town, we owe it to our elders to have that service available for them. All they want is to remain in Milton, they love this town, they have supported it so much, but without the right people and the right services in place, it's going to be difficult, because it's not going to get any easier, it's going to get more and more difficult to, you know, to help these people, because the problem's just getting more and more complex. You know, Social Security, no increase this year. People say, I hear ladies say, "Well, that's because the cost of gas has gone down." Trust me, these seniors aren't driving, the cost of, you know, gas for their cars, and, but to be on a fixed income, and to try and pay taxes, and water bills, and, you know, prescriptions, it's tough. So, if somebody can help and say, "Here, let's look at your prescription plan, and let's see if we can save you a little money for the same thing," what a wonderful service the town's providing them.
Just out of curiosity, if, if we go to funding a full-time outreach worker, why not use the grant money to, I suspect that this, your outreach worker is out straight right now anyways, there's probably need for additional outreach...
We could use extra hours, absolutely.
To use it for a part-time...
Right, you could hire a part-time, you know, there might be somebody who's looking for just mothers' hours, who has the, you know, the background that would fit in, that doesn't need benefits, but in order to get...
Because my sense is, it's probably easier to fund van drivers than...
Right.
But just a suggestion.
Yeah. I just think it's, you know, I'm starting my 23rd year, slowly winding down. And, you know, I just, I just feel, and, you know, the board, we had a lengthy board discussion about this, you know, is this the right year to put it in the budget? I think, you know, the fact that, you know, it is a contingent and a non-contingent budget, it is, you know, looking ahead, you know, it would be, it would not be, you know, the right thing to do, not to put it out there now, and, you know, we've done our homework, I have all the comparison towns, and, you know, just to take a look at it, you know, and truly, it's going to be $42,000, plus, you know, whatever the benefits would be. And I just think, in order to, you know, get a good person, you need to, it has to be a town slot.
Yep.
And it hasn't been for 18 years.
Yeah, just to explain, too, what that, that, and David's probably not familiar with it, I know Katie is, but the town's policy is, and probably somewhat rightly so, is if a person like this outreach worker really is a full-time employee of Milton, but part of the salary is funded by a grant, in other words, the salary's charged with a grant, but they still get a W-2 from the town of Milton for working 40 hours a week. So, they're entitled to insurance and, and retirement, as any other worker would be. The problem is that those expenses are properly chargeable against the grant, and our policy is for all, anybody, schools or anybody, anybody that receives a grant to fund part of a person's salary, that that's, you know, the, the grant also covers that proportional share of their, their employee benefits, which reduces the amount available to pay per salary with them. So, that was the dilemma, the, the amount was just enough to pay the salary, then when you burdened it up with the employee benefits, there wasn't enough money, they had to keep her the, those 27 hours, so...
Well, it's been a problem we've been trying to solve for a long time, so I'm glad to see that it's in the contingent budget. I think that's a good proposal for, for this budget scenario this year, to address that situation.
And I think it's going to be, you know, people are going to say, "Well, last year you had a full-time van driver," and that's, and that's right, we did get the full-time van driver. And, you know, I can't, I, I think, you know, we have to look at the department as a whole, and just say, "This is the one missing piece. If we can put this together, I think it's just going to move forward and be able to serve more of the residents." And, and as you know, you know, I go to all these meetings all over the state, and everybody says the same thing, the smart town who tries to keep seniors in their home, you know, they cost the town less, truly, and all you have to do is have the services in place for them, and, you know, they're not a draw on the schools, they're really not a draw on like parking racks, you know, they're, as, as I think it was Rick Neill, who told me, "They're your ideal, they're your ideal tenant," so to speak, but, you know, they just love this town, they really do. They support overrides, you know, they're already talking about what's coming down the road, and, you know, they, they, they love the town, they've worked hard to get it to where it is, they want to stay here, and with just, you know, that extra help, I think, you know, you'll have a lot of happy elderly residents.
I, I agree, I think that they certainly do deserve it, and with, with the ages growing, with our senior population, and the need for more programming, so I, I, you know, I think it's a good idea, but I also charge you to continue to look at further programming for, for all of our aging seniors, because they are, you know, they're on the move, and I think it's great.
I didn't want to interrupt you, so a segue, I didn't want to repeat what Mary Ann said far better than I could, but, I mean, it's, I've been the chair of the Council on Aging for what, about less than six months? And I, I mean, what goes on up at the Senior Center is always going to be the core of the activities, but I do feel we have a responsibility to look at seniors and their needs in a wider sense. And one of the things that I've been doing over the last several weeks is looking at the really good language in the master plan about senior housing and related things, and aging in place. And, so, I've been looking at that, in that context. And the master plan, I believe, expects the number of seniors in town to approximately double by 2030. Now, related to what we were talking about with the outreach, we've got to start working on that, we, you know, we can't suddenly get to 2020, and find we haven't done anything to address this surge. And that's another argument for sort of incrementally building up the resources at the Senior Center. And it's really a very small amount, as I said in another context, I mean, assuming, which is probably not correct, but it's assuming for now that, that a typical senior lives in a typical Milton house, given the sort of override numbers that are being talked about, that's going to be $600, $700 more in taxes, whereas what we're talking about here is about $7.50 for that, for that house.
Right.
So, it doesn't, it seems like that's a reasonable, well, it's still a very good deal for the town, not so great for the seniors, in terms of money, at least. So, so, on that context, but then, I was looking at primarily the area of housing, and, and we're already desperately short of housing that seniors can downsize into. The waitlists, depending on, you know, at least five years, if not 10 years, at the places you mentioned. If you look at the cohorts, the different age brackets, it's very clear that a lot of seniors have had to move out of town, well, because they couldn't find places that they could downsize into. I looked at the numbers, and it seemed to me that by 2030, you know, at least we've got to figure out what we'd like to have, we'd need about 1,000 more units in town for seniors to downsize into.
Right, right.
And that's, as, as Mary Ann already said, those exactly the size of residents you want. I mean, from the town's point of view, if you're a long time, or a substantial time, they don't take a lot of town services, and also, from a family point of view, because so many of my kids, with kids, grandkids, both of them work. And, you know, grandparents are a great resource in that circumstance, I'm not saying they should work five days a week babysitting, but this, I don't think my wife would go for that. But, and it's a great resource. So, with that in mind, I have begun to work on this, so I'm going to try and focus on housing, I'm going to, we're working on a, I guess, an outline, I don't know what to call it at this point, I'm going to talk to appropriate people like the Clark, other people who know about the town, and develop like Bob Sheffield, the Housing Authority at Fuller, to try and see what we can do. I mean, I think, you know, given the, like the master plan said, there was space of 260 more units in Milton, so, trying to find 1,000 units is probably, was a very ambitious goal, let's put it that way. But we should be at least trying to think of how it might be done.
Right.
And, you know, I think I might try and talk to people like Rotary and that kind of thing, too, just, and, and obviously, trying to get people thinking about it, at least, how we, not so that the master plan, to the extent it can become...
Right.
Real, it does become real, it doesn't just sit around.
Yeah, and, and some of those efforts can be efforts, and, and, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust is, is, is thinking about those things, too, all the time, of, of ways to, and programs that would allow seniors to remain in their house at reduced cost, you know, ways to save them, you know, ways to give them grant money to, to do home improvements, perhaps ways to, to, you know, help with real estate taxes and things like that, or ways to get them additional income, you know, like some, you know, the accessory dwelling, or, you know, things, perhaps, you know, things like that, is, there are a lot of programs out there that can work.
There are a lot of, I mean, it's the other thing, that this staying in place in your house, you know, it doesn't, you've talked about all the maintenance and stuff, which gets, believe me, more and more...
It does, it gets expensive.
Ughs them, at least, as you grow older.
Yep.
So, I don't, I mean, yes, for some people, that would be a solution, but it's not a solution.
Not everybody, no.
No, I mean, I think, you know, the waiting lists at Fuller and, and Home Inc. indicate that a lot of people feel that, that they need to go somewhere where they have less, less cares, if you like, compared with their, connected with their house.
Right.
Michael, you mentioned the master plan, there is going to be a master plan implementation committee that has not yet been fully appointed, but that will be looking at how we take the goals that we've come up with in that plan, and start implementing some of them on a priority basis, or picking off low-hanging fruit first, so I'm not sure how quickly that might rise to the top of the list, but probably something that would...
Well, it's also something that you've got, you've got to think about how to do it.
Yes.
I mean, and you've got just the sheer availability of land, it goes in with the zoning issues that the planning board has been working on, and then, then how do you do it? And my guess would be some kind of private-public partnership, but that's just a guess at this point, because I don't think the town has the resource to do it, and I don't think it's the sort of thing that I think is needed. They might not find it economically attractive enough to do it without some kind of public input.
Right, and typically, that's where community preservation comes in, and we unfortunately don't have community preservation.
Yes, I talked to a gentleman who's in charge of the development of the Priory site, and he said he can't sell a condominium inside 128 for less than $100,000. Admittedly, they're a fairly high-end developer.
Right.
I think your idea to consult with Fuller Village, and MRE and others is good, and Debra Felton would be very interested in talking with you about some ideas.
So, with that in mind, I love PowerPoints, when they're not PowerPoints, they're just handouts. I hate talking and doing things with a screen at the same time, so I don't know how many copies we have, but you have a copy, I have a copy, so there should be plenty there.
Thank you.
So, and in that context, I mean, we, we would like to invite any or all of you to attend one of our meetings, the next one is November 9.
November 9, Monday.
Nine o'clock in the morning, so those of you who work, I know it's tough, but at least you could, we, most of the meetings, all the meetings I've been to, except for one, has been over by 10. We knew that one was not going to be done by 10, so, we invite you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking a long-range look at this, and I think it's very important, and so, appreciate that.
We need to act on the budget, we have a small budget, but it's a lot done for, for small box, right, Mary Ann? So, I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY 2017 budget for the Council on Aging, in the amount of $306,635 for a contingent budget, and $263,171 for the non-contingent budget.
I'll second that.
Much, may I second any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the seniors, thank you, they really, really appreciate this.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Night.
Okay, item nine on the agenda is a discussion with Building Commissioner Joe Prondak, quarterly report, and presentation of FY 2017 budget. Hi, Joe.
Good evening, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
Oh, well, we're getting through this agenda, and it's only 8 o'clock, so...
There you go. So, where are we at with the Building Department?
Well, I think I'll start by saying that the, the future does look bright, numbers are looking good, and I'll just go quickly into some numbers, which I just prepared today. So, in fiscal, fiscal year 14, we took in a total of $861,000, with 1,177 building permits issued. In fiscal year 15, we took in $852,000, slightly less than the previous year, but a slight increase in building permits, $1,216.